Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Sholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Kokavas, who is excused this evening. Would also like to excuse our city manager. He's in training, so he's at a conference. So we're grateful that he's there. We'd like to welcome those of you who are with us here tonight in person, as well as those who may be joining with us on City 56 or some other telecommunication device. We'd like to begin this evening with an invocation with the ask of Councilmember Hatch if he'd lead us in in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Crittenden. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come before the, at this regular meeting of the Sholo City Council. May I ask that your spirit be with us, that we will be fair in our deliberations and concise in our decisions. We thank thee for the wonderful mountain on which we live, and if it be thy will, we would be blessed with moisture to abate this fire season. It's upon us. Again, we thank thee for this opportunity to serve the citizens, the city and the citizens therein, and we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Crittenden and Councilmember Hatch. Appreciate that. We'd like to start this evening with a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Comments need to be limited to three minutes per person, and they need to be directed to the council as a whole. At this time, we have one item for sure here. Rita Graham has asked, Rita, if you'll come up and state your name and address?
You want physical address?
Yes, right here at the mic. Yes, your physical address, please.
It's, I don't know all of it.
Okay, that's fine.
It's number sixty-nine, thirty-one, twelve. It's, I think it's considered Concho.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I've got some issues at the cemetery that the employees, I don't know who's in charge of the cemetery. Was Ed Mutter at one time?
What you can do, you can state your concerns. We really can't have a discussion with you, but you can state your concerns, and then we can address council or address staff to address those issues.
Okay. There were some pictures that about three weeks ago I took in regards of how the cemetery is not, I mean, it's not mowed correctly. Sometimes they just leave strips. Sometimes there's trash. We, as a family, we've got my mother and my father, and my nephew is buried there. And we take the time to mow our own area and keep it clean and dress it up. And we've got others around us that we've became friends with, and they've got their families there. So, you know, we do quite an area of mowing and keeping it up and, you know, making it look good. There's others from before, I mean, they're, the area that we do is probably, I don't know, maybe not even a half acre, quarter acre that we do and mow. The others are not taken care of. I mean, there are spots, big patches of, I don't know if the sprinkler system is not working, but it's dry, there's no grass. Some of the mowing is not done right. I mean, they don't use any equipment other than a riding lawnmower, and they just go in and out around them, and it doesn't look good. And, you know, it bothersome, you know, for a lot of us that have families there. That's how we connect with our deceased. So, that's, we just got some, some issues that, the cemetery is not being taken care of, period.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on, call to the public. Okay, well, I'll just direct the staff if they can look into those concerns that Mrs. Graham has, as well as some of the other issues that have been brought up there at the cemetery, and whatever we can do to start correcting that situation. Thanks for sharing with us, we appreciate it. This time, I'll close, call to the public. Come to consent calendar to see if there's an item that needs to be polled or discussed further. Not all go through the items on the consent calendar. We have a consideration of a renewal of agreement with White Mountain Mills on Wills Managing Senior Center. We have a consideration of the renewal of agreement with the Sholo Historical Society. We have the renewal of the agreement with the Sholo Chamber of Commerce. We have consideration of resolution R-201719, adopting an annual policy and prescribing procedures for purchasing from the mayor and any member of the council. A consideration of an application submitted by Andrea Delhum-Lukawitz on behalf of Walgreens for acquisition of control of its location of fifty-one sixty White Mountain Road. We have consideration of a second addendum to Victor One-Ninety Hangers. We have a consideration of approval of an annual purchase orders for the fiscal year seventeen eighteen, and consideration of acceptance of the construction of Park Valley Phase One roadway construction, and the consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council Study Session June sixth and the regular meeting of June sixth. We have a motion by Councilmember Alsop, seconded by Councilmember Crittenden. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that passed six to zero. Just want to point out the one thing here, the construction of Park Valley roadway construction. We, we got a real favorable bid on asphalt and was able to add extra for project footage to, to that that saved us a lot of money. And then even in the course of doing this project, we were also able to save some money because we didn't have to repair some of the road base. So it was a great savings for the city of Sholo, and we appreciate staff and their efforts of what they've done there. Next item we have is new business. We have item seven A, public hearing, application submitted by Charles Vernon Croy on behalf of Black Bull Restaurant and Sports Liquor, a person transfer, a number six bar liquor license for its location at four forty-eighty-one South White Mountain Road. Ms. Krosakie.
Thank you, Mayor. Charles Croy, who represents Black Bull Restaurant and Sports Lounge, submitted a person transfer application for a number six bar liquor license for the bar's location at forty-one eighty-one, forty-four eighty-one, excuse me, South White Mountain Road. Black Bull has an existing liquor license, but the request is to transfer the number six license from Richard Christmas, the former owner, to Mr. Croy. The property was posted as required by state law, and no public input was received. As part of the application, Mr. Croy also applied for an interim permit with the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, so that he can continue selling alcohol while the number six application is being processed. This interim permit is valid for a hundred and five days. If the application has not been approved, this application hearing, hearing tonight, before the interim permit expires, he would be responsible to request a second interim permit. We had the police department conduct a background check on the applicant, found nothing amiss. And in addition, the Department of Liquor Licenses will conduct its own internal investigation and background checks. Based on the investigator's findings and the recommendation of the city council, the State Liquor Board will decide whether to approve or deny the application. Note that if the council chooses to recommend denial of the application, you must state the reasons. Mr. Croy was called away on a family emergency, so the general manager of Black Bull is here. Her name is Anna Pace, and she's available for questions, should you have any.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or concern of council on this item? Not all open up. This time, a public hearing. If anybody who would like to speak concerning this matter may do so at this time. Seeing nobody moved, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion. Councilmember Crittenden?
I move to recommend approval to the State Liquor Board of the application submitted by Charles Vernon Croy on behalf of Black Bull Restaurant and Sports Lounge for a person transfer of a number six bar liquor license for its location at forty-four eighty-one South White Mountain Road, number two, Sholo, Arizona.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to say something. You know, I know the transfers and everything else, I just hate to see Rick and Trish have to leave. They've been business people in the city of Sholo for a lot of years, had good times, bad times, but, you know, I'm glad to see that it's gone to somebody that's going to keep this going in our, in our area and keep the business going, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that passes six to zero. This time, next item is item seven C, consideration of approval of preliminary development plan for Bison Golf Villas. Justin Trukaskis.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. A little bit of background on this. Mr. Gary Martinson has submitted a preliminary development plan for a ten-lot, five-building, twin-home subdivision to be called Bison Golf Villas. The gross area of the proposed subdivision is approximately two-point-three-one acres with a minimum average and maximum lot size of point-zero-five acres. There is an existing twin-home building on lot numbers five and six. This development is zoned PUD or Planned Unit Development. Previously submitted final plat on the subject property called Estate Villas at Bison Crossing was approved by the City Council in December of two thousand and five. Final plat was never recorded with Navajo County. City code requires or states that final plats expire, expire if they are not recorded with the county within one year of council approval. The preliminary development plan for Estate Villas at Bison Crossing calls, called for a twelve-lot, six-building twin-home subdivision. So this is actually a reduction of one building with two units. The preliminary development plan for Bison Golf Villas shows an existing practice green where the two additional lots were originally located. I'll highlight that on the overhead for you at this time. So originally, there were one building, another building, a third building, four, five buildings.
Justin?
Yes.
You aren't up there.
Okay. Is the council able to see this on your screen?
Yes, we can see it, but you're not on the TV.
All right. Well, we'll move forward. The, the sixth building was originally proposed to be in this location where the practice green has been historically. That building is no longer proposed. So you can see that on the plat, this, but that building is not on this plat. Staff reviewed the submitted preliminary development plan and found that it meets all requirements of city code. Subject property meets all underlying zoning requirements of the PUD. At its meeting of June thirteenth, twenty-seventeen, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the preliminary development plan for Bison Golf Villas, subject to commission recommendations. Those recommendations are attached to your packet and are as follows. Number one, all development shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements. Number two, public sewer and water lines within the development shall have dedicated public easements. Number three, drainage ways, including basins and culverts, shall be designated as private drainage easements. Number four, a fence in similar construction to the existing fence along Old Linden Road shall be extended along the south subject property at Old Linden Road and along the northern property line adjacent to the existing residential areas. Number five, a barrier suitable to the applicant and city shall be constructed along North Thirty-Sixth Drive in order to ensure that proper access to the property is maintained. Number six, the unit shall be, and I'll add the conditions, number six, number, and number seven, were carried forward from the previous approval of the council. Number six, the unit shall be single-story, owner occupied, no timeshares or fractional ownership is allowed. Number seven, landscaping meeting the requirements of section fifteen-one-sixty-seven shall be installed along North Thirty-Sixth Drive. And number eight, all development of Bison Golf Villas shall be in substantial conformance to the submitted preliminary development plan and Bison Crossing master plan. I will also point out, previous discussions with the council, there were some questions brought up regarding a maintenance facility. There is no maintenance facility proposed as part of this preliminary development plan. There is a current, I don't know if you call it a storage area, equipment yard, that is located there by the pond. That is between the subdivision, proposed subdivision, and the pond that is here on the west side, and that is entirely surrounded by the golf course and is adjacent to this Bison Golf Villas. At this time, there's no proposal to change or relocate that portion of the storage facility. So with that, staff as well as the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions of the applicant. If you could, please. Let me come up, Mr. Martinson, please. Now, if we get this approved, you're going to record this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, city. My name's Gary Martinson. I have a twenty-fifty-one Bison Ridge Trail, and I'm ready for questions.
Okay, all right. The, the fence along Old Linden Road where it's kind of dips down, is that going to be restored to a normal height around there?
Yes, it is.
Signage removed?
Yep. Yes.
And I guess I covered with, we do have access for the golf course still to be able to go through there and along, to access the lines through there, the golf carts to be able to cross the property and stuff?
Yeah, we have a golf cart easement that goes from then, the, the grain over to the tee boxes.
Okay.
Yep.
Those are questions I had. Thank you. Any? Councilmember Leach?
Just real quick, Gary, is the only access to that on Thirty-Sixth Drive then, into that property, is that what, that's what it shows on our plan here for, for this villa, is the only access in there is off of Thirty-Sixth Drive?
That's correct, yes.
And, and five and six are already there, and you're going to not tear those down, correct?
Yeah, they, they've been existing for ten, ten years, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. First curiosity question. Most developers go for maximum density. What made you change your mind and drop one out?
You know, I just felt it impacted the views on a couple of the other units, and, and it just seemed to be kind of unnatural to, to eliminate that one building and, and just make sure that all ten other units have stellar views of the golf course.
Thank you.
But that's, I like that question, Mr. Kelly.
Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a couple of questions for you, for Mr. Martinson, but I also have a couple for Justin, too. I want to piggyback on what the mayor said about the fence up there, but also the fence that you're going to be putting along Thirty-Sixth Drive. This is a barrier suitable to applicant and the city, so what's suitable mean?
Yeah, we-
What kind of fence is it going to be?
Yeah, it, it probably will be a, some kind of a block or, or stone type of fence that coordinates with the fence that's along Old Linden Road to create a sense of arrival and entrance into the, into the villas.
Okay, and like right now, parking for the, the maintenance yard, wherever you want to do, there'd be parking in that parking area where you're going to have condos one and two. What's the parking going to be for those type of people that goes over there and work over there?
In the, in the maintenance yard?
Yeah, in the maintenance yard.
They actually drive right into the maintenance yard.
Oh, they've been parking in that parking area, so I just want to make sure they're going to, okay.
They won't be doing that.
I guess my question for Justin then would be, if, right, Councilman Leach just asked the same question that I'm concerned about, is you have one ingress egress off of Thirty-Sixth, and I think that's, that's going to be difficult for Thirty-Sixth, because Thirty-Sixth is your narrowest road in the city of Sholo. And all the traffic that's going down there before Country Club Manor, it, people racing up and down that street has just been atrocious. And I've seen that we've had some sticks out there to do some measuring, I guess, to see what the traffic is. But just like everything else we do, it seems like we always do those sticks and, and not in the real busy time of the season. And it's getting up there, where now living on that road, there's just traffic up and down that road like crazy and going fast. I believe, and without having a, a secondary place to get out of there, you're putting, jeopardizing a lot of things on Thirty-Sixth, or being a narrow road, no, no other way out. If there is a fire or any type of scenario, it's going to be a jam right there, and I, I have a problem with that, so if you can let me know.
Okay. I can address that if you give me a second here. And there we go. Got to scroll through everything we've already talked about. There we go. Okay. And I apologize, when we talked with the mayor today, I told you, I told him that this map was sideways. Normally, maps have north at the top. This one's got north on the right-hand side. Okay? So Thirty-Sixth Drive, which is a public street, runs here along what would be the east side of the property on the bottom of the map. And then we have Old Linden Road that runs on the south side of the property on the left side of the map. This map, this plan itself matches what was originally proposed as far as access. The access has been pushed so that it lines up with West Hanson. That helps avoid potential conflicts with driveways that don't quite line up. When somebody's come up to one and somebody's come up to the other, and they're both trying to make opposite type movements, it can create a conflict. So at this location, you're almost looking at a two-way stop with a through road coming through there. The concern, and I would add that that access has been pushed basically as far south towards Old Linden Road as it could, and still meet that kind of cross-traffic requirement there. Certainly Thirty-Sixth is a concern. We know it's narrow. We know the pavement width is, again, fairly narrow. The concern with putting the traffic onto Old Linden Road is that's, I think, termed a collector's street, and we're more concerned with the traffic coming off of the highway, coming onto Old Linden Road, with people making left and right turns coming out of this proposed project. We feel that that actually would lead to more issues, because Old Linden Road is, is much busier than what Thirty-Sixth is. Even though it's posted at twenty-five, you have people traveling sometimes quicker than, than twenty-five coming off that highway. And so with all of those different factors going in, it really was felt that Thirty-Sixth, even in its current condition, was probably a safer location for that traffic to come out, rather than pushing them and forcing them to go onto Old Linden. That gives them a stop sign at Old Linden that they have to recognize before making a left or right-hand turn. Part of what we look at when, when we're looking at these traffic movements is how many units are proposed for the project. And then we apply basically a, a standard number for vehicle trips coming out of that project. That number is usually ten. Some types of users do more. I mean, if you've got families with little kids that are in school, you're probably going to do more.
Or high school kids.
Yeah, high school kids.
Do a lot.
Guilty, right? Developments that have retirees, that type of thing, typically tend to have maybe a little bit less than the ten, but that's the average that we use. When we say a trip, we're not referring to, I leave my driveway, I go somewhere and I come back. That's not one trip, that's actually two trips. So I leave my driveway, that's one trip. I come back, I got my groceries in the car, that's trip number two. So essentially, they're leaving the property five times and coming back five times. So utilizing that, I mean, we're looking at approximately a hundred vehicle trips per day that this would generate. In the overall scheme of things, a hundred trips a day, even on a road such as Thirty-Sixth, is a fairly negligible number. So roundabout answer, that's why we, we encourage them to look at the Thirty-Sixth rather than Old Linden. We felt it was a safer location.
You know, and I, I understand where you're coming from, but I think it's the same amount of traffic that comes out and goes to his Thirty-Sixth to take a right or left on Old Linden, even if you came out on Low Linden, you still have the same amount of traffic going right or left.
Yep.
You know, so I, I'm just, Thirty-Sixth is a street that we have never touched in a long time, Hanson, never. If you're trying, trying to drive down that street and come out when there's a waste management truck coming down there, you might as well just sit back and wait, because, so that's why I'm thinking, me personally, the, the safety factor of that is, I think we're stretching it out. Even if you look down Old Linden, down by where Thirty-second is and the entrance to Foothall Lake, they're right next to each other, and I, we were concerned about that a long time ago, and there's never been an accident there. That's like I was trying to get this to go out on Old Linden instead of coming on Thirty-Sixth. I just, the safety ask, there's a lot of kids in that neighborhood, and now you're going to have these condos here. Now, granted, just like number six says, you're not, you're not going to be able to do timeshares or anything like that, but you're going to have people in and out, and we got kids and walkers around that so, so much, that we're just putting that extra traffic on there, and I, it's, it's hard for me to buy.
Understood.
Thank you.
Crittenden?
Okay, the pros to what you're doing here is that this was a golf course clubhouse, and there was a larger, much more, larger amount of traffic coming out on Thirty-Sixth and coming out. The cons is that way back when, when they did the design of Old Linden, there's a big hump right there, and you can't see cars coming when you're pulling out on Old Linden if you're going left. If you had an exit, like right in the middle of the fence line going into Old Linden, be right at the top of the hump, and you can see both ways and see what's coming. So that, that would be something that would probably be safer than pulling out on Thirty-Sixth. That's just a personal observance.
And Councilmember Leach?
Real quick, I'd be, just be real cautious on the greenery on Thirty-Sixth and put more on Old Linden. I know you've got a bunch of, looks like decorations over there. As narrow as that street is, back again, if you put some big old trees or shrubs on that street, you're not going to see it. Move them around Old Linden where they're, where the fence is falling down, and stuff would look a lot better than on Thirty-Sixth.
And Mayor, if I could address that, the, the existing wall that is there now, that will be completed as part of this, that is right on the property line. And so any, any landscaping or anything like that that took place on the Old Linden side would be in the right-of-way. On Thirty-Sixth, you can see there's actually a bit of a gap here between the parking area in Track A and the property line, and so that would be where they would actually do that landscaping, is in that strip that they own, and not in the right-of-way itself there along Thirty-Sixth. Again, we know Thirty-Sixth is narrow. We weren't encouraging them to add anything in that right-of-way, such as landscaping that might impede any sort of roadway or traffic or anything like that.
So we're just going to remodel the fence? We're not tearing it down or anything? Just going to fix it?
The, the fence itself would be proposed to be completed, so the gaps that are there in place would be filled in along Thirty, or, excuse me, along Old Linden Road.
Okay.
Councilmember Alsop?
Yeah, just one more thing. Just, I just hope, you know, item number six, I think we need to keep that in, in mind, and if we have to enforce that, 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 you know, there's not a timeshare that this is just for residential type people, or, you know, if you buy it and you're going to rent it out, that, you know, I know he's got a leasing thing over on the other side. These are ninety percent houses all over here, and then we're just putting these five tracks inside there, and, you know, it's a, it's a different type of look than what the rest of the subdivision looks like. So if we can stay on top of that, I would appreciate it.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, to that point, it indicates it's must-be-owner-occupied. That tells me- Yeah, to that point, it indicates it's must-be owner occupied. That tells me renting it out would not be allowed. Is that the intent? No rental of any of these units? I mean, I've just observed that can be a real hardship at times. People buy, they're not gonna die, they're not gonna get sick, they're gonna stay healthy, and they're never gonna sell it. I have people tell me that on a regular basis. Well, maybe they don't, but their heirs do, you know? And if I'm reading this correct, if I buy one of these units and I have family tragedy, it means I can't use it, I can't rent it. Is that what that says? Owner occupied?
Mayor, members of the council, uh, I think a strict reading of, of condition number six, owner occupied, would state exactly what, uh, Councilman Kelly is stating. Um, again, this is a condition that was carried over from the previous approval, which means, uh, times have changed. And so if, if the council is of a mind that they would like to remove that term owner occupied, which would allow for rentals, uh, staff does not object to that. From a, uh, enforcement standpoint, I, I can tell you it would be extremely difficult for me to enforce owner occupied on, uh, on a piece of property like that.
But is this, uh, I'm looking to the developer a little bit here. Is this your desire to have this in this manner as a sales advantage to people to say, look, you buy here, you're not gonna have your neighbor renting theirs out?
Well, I don't know that, uh, that the, the folks that purchase these villas should be any more restricted than somebody that has a single-family home, uh, uh, in a, in another development area. So, uh, uh, you know, I think that, uh, that that is true. This is a, uh, it's a second home market, and it's a second home product. And, uh, and so I would suspect that most, there are a fair number of people that do own them, uh, are there some short period of time during the year, or me, me, I don't know what a short period of time is, but it may be seasonal. Uh, so no, I think, uh, I would request practically that, that, that phrase, if that's what it really meant, that owner occupied would, would restrict it. I, I do, uh, agree with the, the non-timeshare and the non- fractional, uh, absolutely. Uh, but to restrict it to, uh, to not having, uh, to be able to rent them, I think that's, uh, that's a tough one.
I think a better term used there would be single-story, single-family occupied. You know, possibly there.
Very good.
If we get to a motion, if, you know, council's in agreement with that, then that probably needs to be amended, uh, item six there. Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, and kinda back to previous discussion, it seems to me that the traffic coming out there on Thirty-S sixth is gonna be in the ninety percentile turning right on their exit. You think that a bunch of them are gonna turn left and go up through the subdivision?
Yeah, you got a lot of school kids and school parents in there who goes, goes to the left to goes to the high school.
To the left. You mean when they hit Old Linden Road?
Yes, yes.
I'm talking about when they hit Thirty-S sixth. When they're coming out of this development, when they hit Thirty-S sixth, weigh the most of them, in my mind, is gonna turn right. Uh, you know, not go up through the subdivision. Uh, if they got friends or whatever, but they're gonna turn right onto Thirty-S sixth.
Uh-uh, onto Old Linden. Yeah, turn right. No, I'm sorry.
So when they get to Old Linden, yeah, they're gonna be turning left and right, just like the traffic coming out of Thirty-S sixth from the subdivisions probably have the similar.
Well, I understand your concerns on, on the traffic flow coming out of Thirty-S sixth and onto Old Linden, but when you look, if you were to revise this plat and move your entrance onto Old Linden Road, you've messed up your entire plat then. You've got one and two, three, fours gotta be moved, five and six is already built, and you'd be hard-pressed to, you know, put your entrance and design your traffic flow around without moving those units drastically.
I, I think appropriate questions have been raised. And what I would say, I would like to see, is just have engineering take another look at it and see to it that they feel that is fine and, and go with it the way it is. Because evidently, our engineering people said it was okay several years ago, and I don't, you know, I don't see a reason to change that now.
Well, is there a way to work with the developer at all if there can be a foot or two gained there along that roadway so that maybe in the future, that road could be a foot or two wider coming into that intersection at all possible?
Uh, based on the, the current layout of the plat, uh, I mean, it would be possible, you essentially would be shifting the parking closer to the buildings. Uh, you also would be losing some of that landscaping there along, uh, where Thirty-S sixth is. So, uh, it, it's possible, but it's added, it, it is a trade-off there. I'm, I'm at a loss as to what the actual right-of-way width is on Thirty-S sixth Drive at that location. Uh, I don't know if our Public Works Director, if, if he has that information or not, but, um, the, the pavement width is less than what the actual right-of-way width is.
Of course.
In, in that location, I could tell you that.
I just think that turning radius coming out of there to the right on the Thirty-S sixth needs to be where they don't have to come very far on the Thirty-S sixth. If they can have a, a smaller radius there somehow would be very much helpful. Councilmember?
Just a quick comment. I, I personally think there's more traffic there if the clubhouse was there.
Oh, yeah.
So I think, I, I think with these villas there, there's gonna be less traffic than if the clubhouse was there. I mean, you can, you can drive down that road, and you can't even hardly turn into the clubhouse when it was there, when there's a golf tournament or league or whatever going on. So this, as far as density and traffic goes, seems like it's gonna be half of what it could have been if it was still the clubhouse.
I agree.
Mayor?
Councilmember also.
You know, when it, when it, I have two questions. When it was a clubhouse there and everything else, over where Track B was, there was an exit to get out of there, and a lot of people were going out there too. So you had two exits coming out when there was a clubhouse there. So, uh, but my, my, my thing is, down Thirty-S sixth, everybody lives down Thirty-S sixth, their, their property fence, uh, in, in front of their house is pretty far off the side of the road. And I'm not, I, I, I'm not gonna tell you what footage is it is. I know it's, it's quite a ways. But like Mayor was saying up here, it's narrowed it out pretty bad here. If we ever want to do with anything with, with Thirty-S sixth to widen it, to get more, we won't be able to do it up here. Down, down Thirty-S sixth, towards the end, end of it, we'll be able to do it because the houses have got all their fences away from the road. But up here in the front, we don't have it. It's, it's gonna be pretty dang tight.
Any other discussion?
I think I'd just like to make a couple of clarifications. The standard right-of-way width on Thirty-S sixth is fifty feet. And the other thing is, I, I just want to, uh, agree with Mr. Critten and Mr. Leach about the trips that are generated. If you look at four tee times an hour with four people in there for a ten-hour day, that's a hundred and sixty trips, and the trips that are calculated for this is a hundred trips, so there would be approximately sixty percent more. Keeping in mind, though, that there was another entrance on Old Linden Road. Another issue with, uh, with Thirty-S sixth Drive, and this is something that a, that a former city engineer actually, uh, brought up, is that Thirty-S sixth Drive does have, uh, sight-distance issue because of, because of that hump. So I, I guess I'm kinda concurring with Mr. Critten's pro and con, but I will tell you that we'll have far fewer trips in and out of this property with condominiums in, than the, um, uh, golf course.
Hey, at this time, I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Leach?
I move to approve the preliminary development plan for Bison Village, subject to the conditions of approval specified by the Sholo Planning and Zoning Commission, and redo what everybody said about number six.
Right, item number six.
Verbiage that. It ran through there.
So the verbiage on item number six, instead of being owner occupied, would be single-family occupied?
That's ditto that.
We have a motion. Seconds. Second by Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kelly, you have a question, or was that a mo?
Question.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass five to one. Thank you. Next item we have is item seven D, which is, uh, consideration of approval of preliminary development plan for Dakota Five at Bison Ridge. Mr. Trugaskis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, background, Mr. Gary Martinson has submitted a preliminary development plan for a five-lot subdivision called Dakota Five at Bison Ridge. The gross area of the proposed subdivision is approximately one point four-six acres with a minimum lot size of point-two-one acre, average lot size of point-two-nine acre, and maximum lot size of point-four-five acres. This development is zoned PUD or Planned Unit Development. Staff reviewed the submitted preliminary development plan and found that it meets all requirements of city code. All proposed lots of this subdivision abut and accepted city street, uh, Bison Ridge Trail. There is an existing home built on what would be lot number one of this subdivision. The proposed preliminary development plan for Dakota Five at Bison Ridge shows twenty-foot street side and thirty-five-foot rear setbacks for all lots. Lots will have eight-foot side setbacks except for lot number five, which shows a thirty-foot setback along the southern property line next to Track A of the Heights at Bison Ridge. Staff was contacted by a representative of the Bison Ridge Homeowners Association with concerns that the proposed plat does not meet the requirements of the CCNRs for Bison Ridge. Upon further research, staff, city staff cannot find any record that the proposed plat for Dakota Five at Bison Ridge is a part of the Bison Ridge HOA. In addition, the applicant's attorney has contacted the city and has given a firm opinion that the proposed plat is not a part of the Bison Ridge HOA. The city does not enforce CCNRs. Mr. Martinson has met with representatives of Bison Ridge and is discussing including this development into the existing Bison Ridge HOA. The subject property meets all underlying zoning requirements of the PUD and Bison Ridge Master Plan. Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the preliminary development plan for Dakota Five at Bison Ridge, subject to conditions of approval specified by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those conditions are as follows. Number one, all development shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements. Number two, public sewer and water lines within the development shall have dedicated public easements. Number three, drainage ways, including basins and culverts, shall be designated as private drainage easements. And number four, all development of Dakota Five at Bison Ridge shall be in substantial conformist to the submitted preliminary development plan and Bison Ridge Master Plan. With that, staff as well as the applicant are available.
Any questions? Councilmember Leach?
You had a picture up there earlier of an existing house. Are you telling me they're just adding four more to the one that's already there? Is that kinda what that meant?
Yeah, let me go back a little bit here.
There.
So outlined in red is the approximate area where this Dakota Five would be located. There is a home with a garage that have already been constructed on this property. That would become lot number one. Um, the remaining four lots would be to the south of that and would be similar-type construction to that home there.
And obviously, there's room for that, or you wouldn't have brought it to us, I'm sure.
Um, so if you, this is the plat itself, so you can see lot number one kinda outlined here, and it is fairly large. You've got lot number two, lot number three, four, and five. Uh, and then if you look directly across the street, uh, there in the existing Bison, that gives you a good idea of what the existing lot sizes are compared to what these proposed lot sizes are.
So any comments from the person that lives in lot one?
Uh, I believe he's sitting right behind me, so.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure. So he's not fighting it? He doesn't want it there?
No.
Okay. I, I thought that's where it was, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Councilmember also.
Mayor, uh, Justin, the, the question I have is, so what, what was the big thing on the HOA stuff? There's a lot of stuff in there about it, so what, what transpired on that?
The Reader's Digest version, uh, the existing HOA was concerned that this property, uh, was included as part of the existing HOA and was subject to the existing CCNRs. There was a concern that was brought forward that the existing CCNRs say that properties won't be further split. Um, however, because this property is not actually part of the Bison Ridge H, the existing Bison Ridge HOA, uh, it's not under those requirements. And so, uh, the, the existing concern was, can you split properties when our CCNRs don't allow you to make that split? Uh, and, uh, our understanding is that they're not under those CCNRs, so they are able to make those, uh, futures, uh, those splits.
So there's CCNRs across the street from them and down the road from them?
Uh, there is a set of CCNRs. There are CCNRs for each one of these projects. There's actually, I think, one, two, three, four different projects that are around this. Um, and each one of them has their own separate CCNRs, pretty similar overall. Um, the overriding thing is each one of those developments is part of the master HOA. This piece of property is not.
So if, if I, if I own, um, a property across the street from them, and my HOA says I can't have trailers or boat or anything else sitting out there, these ones can, so they can have it sitting out in front, and there's nothing they can do about it?
Theoretically, yes. They have submitted a draft set of CCNRs for these five lots. Uh, those CCNRs match what is in Bison already. Um, so they, technically, it would be under the same requirements. The discussion that Mr. Martinson has been having with the HOA, uh, as discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission, would be to actually annex these lots into the master HOA once the construction is complete.
So do you, do you have that language anywhere, or do we have to put it into something?
Um, I'd probably defer that one to Mr. Brown, and he can explain, uh, CCNRs and the city relationship probably a little better than what I can.
Oh, you can probably ask Mr. Martinson if he would stipulate or agree to that, but we don't force people to join HOAs or have CCNRs. That's.
But since they've already talked about it in planning and zoning, then?
If Mr. Martinson agrees to.
Maybe we have Mr. Martinson stand up and we can ask?
Uh, yes, it is our intention to annex, uh, those lots to the, uh, Bison Ridge Homeowners Association upon the completion of those homes. We've, we've met with the Board of Directors. Uh, we've committed to them, uh, in writing that, uh, that's, is our intentions, and I think they certainly understand that, uh, that we've talked to them about our architectural features. I mean, we've built everything in there, so it's not like we're gonna mess something up right now. So, uh, everything there will comply with, with the way Bison Ridge has developed over the years and will be annexed to the HOA.
So if we, so if we ask you if you would put that in after all five lots are constructed, that you would go ahead and do the HOA?
That's correct.
Can we have that? Can we put that down in one of the things here?
Mine and me. Yep.
But it's nothing we can enforce, right?
No, they enforce it. Forcing to do it, but he can agree to do it instead of that.
Part of the conditions.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Kelly?
Question. Why the stipulation after the homes are built? Why not now? I mean, first of all, you got two sides of the coin, right? I mean, the Homeowners Association's gotta agree to take it, right? You can't just say, I'm coming in whether you like it or don't. So there's two sides to this thing. The Homeowners Association Executive Board or somebody's gotta agree that they want it. Why wouldn't they? I mean, it's for, if you're gonna have CCNRs, the theory is they're for your protection, not your aggravation. So if they're the same as requirements, and the only thing that you would not have agreed to put it in the CC, uh, in the association before you split the lots down and made, because you couldn't have split them. So since they weren't part of it, assuming that that evaluation is correct, then you have a right to split them according to our subdivision code. Since you're making more than three, you're gonna have to do the whole subdivision plat. That's why you're here, right? So all I'm saying is, why not go ahead, and if the directors or whoever in the Homeowners Association want it, just go ahead. the directors or whoever in the homeowners association want it, just go ahead and make it part of it now. And then when you build, it would also be part of it.
I appreciate that. You know, we've, we've developed and built everything in there. We didn't build it under the auspices of a homeowners association. We were the declarant, right? And, and they became part of, we, we regulated the architectural committee. We regulated the homeowners association. So, you know, in this particular case, you know, we, we are giving ourselves the, the option of, of moving along at our pace and with our product, but we have no concerns. I just think that, that why wouldn't we give ourselves that option? What, what's the purpose right now of doing it? We'll, we know we're going to work with them, and we've, we've told them that, and so. And we, I don't intend, Mr. Kelly, to change that idea. We, we intend to, to annex those to the homeowners association upon the completion of construction.
You know, is there anybody, you know, we have one side of the party here. Is there anybody from the homeowners association that's here tonight? You know, does anybody, any of you who like to comment at all? Thank you. I failed to mention on any items that we have tonight. You just need to raise your hand on, and you're allowed to speak on any items here.
Thank you, sir.
Just give us your name and.
My name is Mary Lenton. I'm the HOA president. We took over the HOA in 2015, and we currently are a homeowner-run board at this time. I live at 1541 North State Coast Circle, which is in the middle of the development, and I'm in part of the master, excuse me, the master plan. We have been in discussion with Mr. Gary Martinson and Scott Martinson, and I do have an email here that he says, "Please accept this email as my assurance that the four vacant lots of Dakota Five," excuse me, "along with the existing cabin will be annexed to the Bison Ridge HOA upon completion of construction of the cabins." One of the issues that we had was that we just wanted to confirm that the construction would be equivalent to what is already being built there. And they have assured us that with pictures and drawings and color guides that every, let me just read this, because this will make it easier. He says, "We will make every effort to make sure that these four new homes follow the existing architecture and material types as the neighboring properties. These homes will be constructed on approximately a quarter acre lots and will range in size from approximately 900 square feet to 1,250 square feet. The final square, square footage determination will be dependent upon what size we deem marketable at that time." He says, "We anticipate that we will also construct our option one car garages with each home. We guarantee that the homes will be built with propane, two metal roofs, which is what we have in the community now. We didn't want composite roof that would be different from what we have. Split-faced block foundations and either cedar siding or LP smart site, which is basically an engineered, engineered wood product, which would be equivalent to what we have. Some of the homes have that. Most of the homes are cedar or log sided right now." He says, "We will be using synthetic decking, evergreen, redwood railing, metal balusters with synthetic top cap and eight-by-eight square, not round, vertical post supports for all patios." And they did include photos of similar type of construction. We just want to make sure that we have the continuity in the neighborhood and that we don't have something that is so different than what we have. And also to ensure that they are in the HOA, so that they're not riding on the backs of all the rest of the homeowners by using our, you know, streets, using our trash, using our parks, basically using all of our amenities.
Do you have any problem accepting these lots into your homeowners association?
No, we do not.
Any other questions?
No, I just, the same thing. Is it acceptable, the agreement you have with the builders of this section?
I believe so.
Okay.
Also, I'm, my name is Meredith Eckhart. I live at 1581 North Mustang Circle, and I am the secretary for the Board of Directors. And to answer some of the questions that were asked over here, what our big concern was is that had we not been notified by Mr. Trigaskis, we had no awareness of this occurring. So that's how we found out. So our concern was that we weren't contacted as a homeowners association to let us know about this. That's where it came in, that we were of the understanding it had been in the HOA and came to find out that we had some misinformation provided to us. And our big concerns, and to your point of annexing it in prior to the build, the reason we would want that is for, like Mary said, for continuity, conformity. And again, you have to realize that, and I know you do, that there will be trucks and vehicle traffic, et cetera. I know there is one private road that should be the primary access road. Every other road in there is private and.
One is public.
Right, with the exception of that one. Every other road in there is public, and we pay dearly for it. In that letter, it shows you that we have a budget that's upwards of a quarter of a million dollars a year. Insurance, road repairs, landscape, power, lights, water, the whole shoot and match. So we were very concerned that there wouldn't be a requirement and that this would, quote, "right in the back," as Mary said. Our other concern was conformity, because there is another dwelling that was built by Mr. Martinson that didn't conform to the CCNRs due to some other stuff that I won't know. But so we just wanted to ensure that what was being built there now would indeed conform to the rest of the neighborhood, the development.
So under your homeowners association, you have dues, a fee as well, a monthly fee?
They do. There is one master association, and then there are, we've got sub neighborhoods, and then we've got two sub associations. The sub associations pay into the master, and then they also pay their own separate dues. And in addition to conforming to the master's CCNRs, they also have their own CCNRs. So we have multiple sets of CCNRs and multiple different.
Sounds complicated to live in there.
It is, it is.
We've got a flow chart, but so. Those were our concerns. If that answers any other questions that I heard.
Okay, I just heard from your president that this is acceptable. Once again, is it acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
It's acceptable.
Very good.
We'll be doing all that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you sharing that with us. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll look for a motion. Like Councilmember Leach.
I move to approve the preliminary development plan for Dakota Five at Bison Ridge, subject to the conditions of approval specified by the Sholo Planning and Zoning Commission.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Don't we have to do that on their?
Wait, yeah.
Yeah.
Morgan, can you phrase that on how we add that in there as far as he said he'll, what Martinson, Mr. Martinson said?
Right, I think he stipulated in the record already that he would do that.
Okay, so I don't need that in the motion then. Okay.
Seconded by Councilmember Crittenen. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you. Appreciate. Thank you for working together, citizens. Next item we have is item E, consideration of acceptance of construction of wastewater treatment plant and operations control building. Mr. Cupp.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Sholo Wastewater Treatment Plant project included constructing and operations and control ONC building to house operations staff, plant control equipment, and laboratory facilities. Construction of the building, the final element of the treatment plant, was removed from the larger project scope to provide opportunities for smaller local contractors. Project delivery method was design-build, a process that uses a single contracted entity to perform both the design and the construction services. The contractor selection method was qualifications-based. In October 2016, staff solicited statements of qualifications for design-build firms to design and construct the operations and control building. The SOQs were reviewed and ranked by a selection committee of city staff, city council representatives, and a licensed contractor. The SOQs were graded, and the committee ranked Southern Construction as the most qualified firm. The council approved the pre-construction services contractor with, with Southern Construction at its, at its October 4th, 2016 meeting, and approved the construction contract for a guaranteed maximum price of $294,883.27 at its January 17th meeting. That's 2017. The scope of the project included constructing a 1,400-square-foot building with restrooms, shower, a laboratory, two offices, a break room, and a storage area. The building was constructed to materials that matched the other treatment plant buildings. Southern Construction recently completed the building's construction using local contractors. Much of the building materials was also locally sourced, including the concrete block. Southern submitted an itemized cost proposal for a turnkey project of $294,883.27, which included construction, insurance, bonding, labor, materials, and all incidentals. There was also a $20,000 contingency included in the price, with any unspent contingency returned to the city. At project completion, only $3,061 of the contingency was spent, and another $1,800 of the budget was unspent. This brought the final cost to $276,144.96 for a savings of $18,738. The building was the final element of the treatment plant, and the final savings for the entire wastewater treatment plant project is approximately $87,000. Staff recommends accepting the construction of the wastewater treatment plant operations and control building, releasing the retainage, and initiating the two-year warranty period. I'm going to be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to staff and everybody who worked hard to bring this $10 million project within budget and stayed within budget. When we reviewed this with several different communities that had done a waste treatment plant, their main concern was the overages, in some cases, five million, six million, some cases, a whole nother plan of 15 million that they had to spend to, to get it right. And we spent a lot of time, and it's admirable, that we were $87,000 under budget, so, thank you. Any comments? Look for a motion if you're not. Vice Mayor.
I'll make a motion. I move to accept the construction of the wastewater treatment plant operations and control building, release the retainage in the amount of $27,614.49, and initiate the two-year warranty period.
Are the motions are seconded? Seconded by Councilmember Alsop. Any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
I want to say, I really like doing projects when they come in under. And if we did a percentage on this against the total, it wouldn't look like a very big percentage. But under is better than over. And when you do big projects, they just have a, they just have a way of coming in over. And I really appreciate that this was watched after and dealt with, and compliment the contractor and the staff, whoever helped make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alsop.
My, diddles to the same thing. I mean, $10 million budget come under, that's great, so that's, that's what we're after. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. I guess we can have cookies and milk down there, or just drink the water and wash it down, right?
I think so.
Clean it this now.
Sometime in the near future, we're planning on having some sort of an open house, just so folks can get down there and look around. I did have a photo that I was going to have in the, in the presentation here, but I had some difficulty getting it from my phone to my city computer, so apologies for that.
You're going to give us a tour of the sewer treatment plant?
Absolutely.
Not quite sure I have a.
Now, that's exciting.
You guys need to go look at it. It's impressive.
Yeah, right.
Drive by.
Our next item is consideration of amendments to conditional use permits submitted by Green Hills Patient Center, Inc. Mr. Trigaskis.
Mayor and Council, I brought my water up to the counter for this one.
You're going to be there a while.
Background, it is rather lengthy, so I've asked for council's dispensation in, in reading through this. At its regular meeting of June 4th of 2013, the city council approved Conditional Use Permits, or CUP 60204156, submitted on behalf of Green Hills Patient Center, Inc., to allow the sale of medical marijuana at 3191 South White Mountain Road, more particularly described as a portion of APN 210, boy, that didn't come out very well, 21033048B. And we've got the aerial there on the overhead. The council included 17 conditions as part of this approval. Staff recently met with representatives of Green Hills Patient Center who requested three amendments to the previously approved conditions. On November of 2010, Arizona voters approved Proposition 203, which allowed the use of marijuana for medical purposes. Included in the proposition were provisions for facilities to dispense medical marijuana to qualified patients. This citizens initiative called on the Arizona Department of Health Services, or AZDHS, to create a medical marijuana program within 120 days after the effect, the official election results. The proposition stated local jurisdictions cannot prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries, or MMDs. However, cities may enact reasonable zoning regulations that limit the use of land for registered nonprofit MMDs to specified areas. In response, City Code Section 15167, entitled Medical Marijuana Related Facilities, was added to the zoning ordinance to outline the requirement for medical marijuana dispensaries. In enacting these zoning regulations, the city determined that commercial areas were preferable to industrial areas for locating MMDs. This determination was based on the police chief's concern that, that the dispensary be visible to patrolling officers, and the fact that there are several schools and churches operating within the city's industrial zones. Several court cases challenging Proposition 203 have been heard by Arizona courts, and the courts have upheld the legality of Prop 203. On August 7th of 2012, the AZDHS conducted a random selection process to award certificates for medical marijuana dispensaries. Green Hills Patient Center, Inc. is the organization awarded the dispensary registration certificate by AZDHS for the Sholo CHAW. The CHAW is a community health analysis area, which includes Sholo, Pine Top Lakeside, and portions of unincorporated areas of Navajo County. Currently, according to ARS 362804.02F, a qualifying patient or caregiver may cultivate marijuana for medical use only if a registered nonprofit MMD is not operating within 25 miles driving distance of the qualifying patient or caregiver's home. Since there is an MMD in the Sholo CHAW, a qualifying patient or caregiver cannot cultivate marijuana for medical use within his or her home. Following review of the application, public testimony, representations made by the applicant, and stipulations made by the applicant, the council voted in June of 2013 to approve CUP 60204156, subject to the following conditions. And you'll notice that several of these conditions have a bold and underlined. These are the conditions that are requested to be amended by the applicant. Or there are a couple of conditions that become redundant. And so those are being recommended to be removed as part of this process. These conditions are, "All development shall comply with all applicable state and local requirements, including Arizona Department of Health Services requirements, city zoning, and business license requirements." Number two, this conditional use permit is non-transferable. Should a change in ownership or location occur, a new conditional use permit shall be required. Number three, the applicant shall comply with all documents submitted to the city as part of this conditional use permit, including the operational procedures and supplemental materials. Number four, signage shall only display the facility name. This, this condition is being requested to be changed. This condition would be amended to read, "As reasonably approved by the city, signage shall include the facility name and medical cannabis dispensary." Number five, hours of operation shall be limited to seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The applicant is requesting that this condition be amended to read, "Hours of operation shall be limited to seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. during winter hours, and extending from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during summer hours, being from Memorial Day to Labor Day." Number six, submission of an application for dispensary registration certificate constitutes permission for the city to enter and inspect the dispensary. permission for the city to enter and inspect the dispensary. Number seven, an onsite inspection of a dispensary or the dispensary's cultivation site shall occur at a date and time agreed to by the dispensary and the city. That is no later than five working days after the date the city submits a written request to the dispensary to schedule the certification or compliance inspection, unless the city agrees to a later date and time. Number eight, the city may, after receiving allegations of a dispensary's noncompliance with this conditional use permit or state law from a verified source, inspect the property for compliance with notice. Number nine, if the city identifies a violation of City Code Section fifteen-one sixty-seven or any condition of approval, the city may schedule a hearing related to the revocation of this conditional use permit. Number ten, the applicant shall be responsible for installing and maintaining exterior lighting to facilitate surveillance. Number eleven, a security plan meeting the approval of the Arizona Department of Health Services with a copy provided to the city shall be required prior to the opening of the business. All alarm systems shall comply with Article four-two Alarm System Regulations of the City Code. Panic buttons shall be installed in the interior of the building. A security guard shall be on the premises at all times the dispensary is open for business. Number twelve, no loitering shall be permitted on the exterior of the proposed business. Number thirteen, only qualifying individuals, employees of the business, or other qualified individuals, including city and state staff members, shall be permitted inside the proposed business. Number fourteen, the dispensary shall not dispense, deliver, or otherwise transfer marijuana to an entity other than another dispensary with a valid dispensary registration certificate issued by the Arizona Department of Health Services, a qualifying patient with a valid registry identification card, or a designated caregiver with a valid registry identification card, or acquire usable marijuana or mature marijuana plants from any entity other than another dispensary with a valid dispensary registration certificate issued by the Arizona Department of Health Services, a qualifying patient with a valid registry identification card, or a designated caregiver with a valid registry identification card. Number fifteen, this condition is requested to be amended. Currently, this condition reads, this permit is for the sale of medical marijuana only. No other product other than medical marijuana shall be sold from the site. On-site cultivation is prohibited. The applicant is requesting to amend this condition to allow for the sale of paraphernalia. Revised condition would read, this permit is for the sale of medical marijuana and related paraphernalia only. On-site cultivation is prohibited. Number sixteen, the hours of operation are limited to six days a week, from nine AM to six PM, with council review in six months regarding the days and hours of operation. The hours of operation included in this condition is redundant with condition number five and should be removed. And number seventeen, a certified security guard is on premises during hours of operation. Again, this condition is redundant with condition number eleven and should be removed. Regarding the request to amend condition number four to read, quote, "as reasonably approved by the city," signage shall include the facility name and medical cannabis dispensary. The applicant has stipulated that the word marijuana and/or the use of the pictorial representation of a marijuana leaf is not proposed and will not be used. This request is being made to help better identify the business and to help prevent confusion by noncustomers of the dispensary. Regarding amending condition number fifteen, the applicant is asking to allow the sale of medical marijuana-related paraphernalia in accordance with state statutes and regulations. This would allow the sale of material used by licensed cardholders within a controlled environment. Currently, licensed cardholders are unable to purchase paraphernalia within the controlled environment of the dispensary, leading to sales at locations and through processes that do not have the same level of oversight, including compliance with City Code and state statutes related to the sale of paraphernalia. With that, I'm available for questions. The representative of the Green Hills Patient Center is also available, and I believe we have some members of the public here who are also interested in making a statement or two.
Thank you. Right question, Councilmember Lee.
Just a few of these. I wish it was more separate on... I know we can't separate these all, because some of them, like, I can agree with, like the sale, keeps everything in one place. I don't agree with the hours. I just wish it was broke up a little more. Our hours that we stipulated when we first gave them this condition, use permit personally, I think are fine. I don't think it should be seven days a week. But we have to approve the whole thing. We can't do it separately. Is that correct? No?
We can pick and choose.
We can. Then go ahead. Okay.
Member Rossup.
I'll jump in first then. Item number five, about the hours, shall be limited to seven days a week. This is what he wants to change it to, to limit it seven days a week, from nine to six during the winter hours, extended to nine to eight during the summer hours, beginning Memorial Day and Labor Day. With our condition of number sixteen, we had limited six days from nine to six, and we also put in a stipulation, if they had a problem with that, that they can come back within a six-month regarding that, and they never did. You know, this has been in service for quite a while now. And so they haven't come back to us to that. So I'm thinking the hours should stay the same, exactly where it was. I can't see why I need to change the hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day, changing to eight o'clock, from six to eight. Is there a special thing that happens between Memorial Day and Labor Day? It's still the same days. It just doesn't hit me where somebody can look in the crystal ball and say, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, I need some more hours, because I'm going to have more people here. It's just a big crystal ball. If there was a big concern a long time ago, they should have came and talked to us on that six-month after we gave them the condition. So I kind of agree with that. So the signage, I don't have a problem with the signage. They can still do the signage, but that's just my concerns.
I'm just going to weigh in on the signage a little bit. I think they violated this condition that we gave them immediately, because they've had, like, a green... I don't know, for better words, red cross, it's a green cross, or whatever that they've had, which is in violation to what they agreed to. I would like to keep the words cannabis out of it, marijuana out of it, green leaves out of it. I don't mind if they put something on their door, that this is a cannabis dispensary. When people get to the door, they see that it's right there on the door, that they don't want to go in, then that's their choice. They know it's not a Green Hills patient place, that maybe they could get their back fixed or something. But, you know, on that side. But I think as far as visibility, our whole intention was to keep this as low-profile as possible, and it's in a commercial area. A lot of businesses in town operate from nine to six, Monday through Saturday. The majority of our business owns it, and so I don't know that we should, you know, bend too much on that. I agree with the paraphernalia being sold there, because it's being sold throughout the city, and this limits it. At least then we can start citing those other places that are selling it, possibly illegal or at least finding it, you know, another reason. Councilmember Crittenen.
I agree with that. I think that the signage should remain the same. This is a prescription-only operation, so people have to have a prescription to come here, nobody else is allowed. So I'm not sure why advertising would be very important. The paraphernalia, I think it's important that the people that... with the medical prescriptions, and that they can get their paraphernalia there. I think that's critical. The hours, I meant a toss-up on it. I think it's fairly important that they're open during daylight hours for the safety of the individuals that are purchasing, not purchasing, from the prescription, obtaining the medical marijuana, and the employees themselves when they're coming and going. And I think that's probably why they extended the hours the way they attempted to extend Since it is a prescription-only, I'm not sure why they would need the extra hours and the extra days. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Kelly?
I would like to hear from others here that have input, and from the applicant. Are they here?
Let me open up the public, if they'd like to speak, and then we'll ask the applicant if they would share their comments there. So anybody, the public, if they'd like to weigh in on this measure, may do so. Thank you, just state your name.
Yeah, hi. Thomas Cedarblade, twenty-four fifty South White Mountain Road. All of you are aware that I have adjacent property to it. I'm not comfortable with basically anything that's been proposed, obviously for the same reasons that you've already stated. And I'd like to really object to adding cannabis to any type of signage. That just, in my opinion, you know, with adjacent property, whatever I choose to do with it, it's just going to exacerbate the problem, in my opinion. The other thing is, you know, I have people come to my businesses all day long, and they walk in and they go, are you the dentist, or are you the audiologist? And we put real estate on our door. People still walk in, you know. I mean, people are going to walk into a business if they get the mindset of whatever's going to happen. I agree with what you said, Mayor, and I appreciate it. I think it could be posted on the door, and that's going to do... that's going to be, I think, as limiting or whatever to people walking up and trying to get in there for, other than prescription marijuana. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments of the public? I would like to hear from the applicant, her feelings on these conditions and things we've shared here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers and the staff. My name is Pam Donner. I'm here to represent Kevin Singer, who's the court-appointed receiver of Green Hills Patient Center. I don't know if you're aware that the business is in receivership. Receivership is as a result of dispute of some sort of the partners, and as the lawsuits are filed, then the judge determines that the asset needs to be put in the hands of a third independent party to properly operate the business, to maintain the business and make sure the business operates under all the requirements of the laws. So we took over this dispensary in March two thousand sixteen. It was selling approximately twenty thousand dollars of medical marijuana per month. We have straightened out the operation, put in a very good staff, and we're now doing gross sales of a hundred and forty thousand dollars per month. So we've increased the revenues, and we are servicing approximately twenty-five hundred patients a month, and we're averaging about two hundred new patients every month. So I believe that it's filling a need in this community. The mountain communities are very underserved. I happen to be involved with the dispensary in Payson. It's called Uncle Herbs, and they service about fifty percent more patients in that area. So, and some patients will drive back and forth based on certain products and quality and that type of thing. I'll start with maybe the idea of the signage and cannabis on the sign. I don't live here. I live in the valley, but I am in the cannabis space. I'm not a patient. I don't have a card. I do have a dispensary agent card, because I technically am the one operating this facility, per the state of Arizona. So I just wanted to point out is that you do have cannabis on other sides in the community. Wherever Mateo's Mexican Grill, I think it's on the main road coming in, I've eaten lunch there a couple of times, there is a sign there that says Medical Cannabis Recommendation Clinic. So I guess my only thinking with that is that I'd like to identify what we are. Apparently, we have a lot of people stopping in to Green Hills, thinking that it's an urgent care or something like that. So it would be helpful to have the sign say what we are and who we are and what we do. Just a comment there, that maybe you would reconsider letting us put cannabis on our sign.
I'll talk to that reason why that was cannabis. You fall under a conditional use permit, and so we're able to put conditions on you to be able to open up your business. In our signage code, it doesn't necessarily exclude that word in our signage code, and so that business is doing it under just the regular signage code, and so it was not restricted for them. Can you add anything you'd like to that possibly?
Sure. The original condition was stipulated by the original applicant, that's why it's in the conditions, and so it can be left alone or changed or whatever.
There's a difference there.
Can I ask you a quick question? You stated that you have increased by three to four times the amount of sales, I guess you'd call it. Does that mean that there's been three to four more times prescriptions written, or what happened?
Well, I don't know, because I have not looked at the number of patients that have cards that are in this CHA. There is an increase in cards across the state of Arizona. What happened is, we put inventory there, and now those people don't have to drive to Payson, or I think there was one in Taylor as well, and I think it's closed. I could be wrong. But because we have inventory now, what has happened is, the people have a place to buy their medicine. So they're coming. Also, what's happening, which talks about or speaks to the hours, it's very seasonal up here. All the people that come up for the summertime, I have neighbors in Scottsdale that own second homes up here, they hold cards, they're buying their medication up here. And they're buying it because we have put in a high quality. We stock brands from around the state. It's not select. We have people drive up from Tucson and Phoenix to deliver us our supplies, our inventory. So we've created a very highly-regarded medical marijuana dispensary. We have a wonderful selection of products. And also, we've been hampered a little bit, because we haven't been able to sell the vape pens and the different paraphernalias there, which really are a medicine delivery system. So that will help a lot as well. They've gone to other places in town to buy some of these things, and that's what we spoke to the staff about. We brought in this paraphernalia that we bought at Walmart and Circle K, different gas stations, and said, well, if you can buy it at the gas stations in this community, why can't we at least sell it at the dispensary? So that's the reason for that request. The hours are really key. It's summertime, there's a lot of seasonal traffic up here. Right now, we don't open until ten. We have people waiting in the lobby. We opened the other morning, there were fifteen people in line outside, and if we could have longer hours, at least in the summertime, when there is a seasonal influx of patients, then that would allow us to serve the community better.
We've allowed you to open at nine, and you choose to open at ten.
Right. Yeah, and that's something we're looking at.
Councilmember Kelly?
Number two condition hasn't been highlighted here, but I will drop back before I deal with that and say, I haven't heard any council member object to the amendment that you might be able to sell the paraphernalia there that goes with the medicine, as you call it.
Item four?
Huh?
Item four? You said item two.
Well, then I was going back to item two. I'm just observing, I hadn't heard any council member object to the sale of paraphernalia yet. I don't know. Item two on here makes me wonder if you shouldn't be applying for a conditional use permit period. It says if it changes ownership. Now, I'm looking to our attorney for the answer to this being a forced change of some kind. Does that exempt this from item two? Are we even chasing a wrong rabbit here? Do you need to be applying for an application to even be there?
It hasn't changed ownership.
Yeah, let me address it. The ownership is not changed. What she's saying is that it's in receivership. So a court appoints a receiver to oversee the vis- So, a court appoints a receiver to oversee the business operations while the parties that are owners of the business.
Is not applicable under this circumstance. I just wanted to clear that up. You know, and hours of operation, to me, the idea of daylight is key. And I believe that was key in my mind back when this was all done. I'm just, I'm just reliving what we went through as a council. And maybe you got some clue and maybe you don't, it doesn't really matter if you know what we went through. But this is quite a struggle, okay? So, to have you come back and say, I wanna change this and I wanna change that and I wanna change something else. Well, I'm wondering, let's just say the council agreed with what you want, would it be two months, three months, six months before you're back wanting to change a bunch of more stuff? I don't know. And I mean, this was negotiated out and stipulated by the company that stood here before us and was granted the very limited business opportunity that nobody else had the privilege of. And I'm, I got a lot of stuff in me saying, just leave it alone. I also got something in me saying, part of it didn't make any sense about the selling paraphernalia, so I'm inclined to deal with that. The idea of hours of operation needs to stay within the daylight hours is for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'd like for you to restate your increase in revenues from before to where you are now.
When we came in, they were doing $20,000 to $25,000 a month in sales. I also believe, and I don't, I've been told this and it's been recorded in the courts down in Phoenix, but the dispensary was not open. There was something about a theft in June and it stayed closed until sometime in October. They did a little bit of sales then. Then, a court-appointed receiver was put in in February, he didn't know what he was doing. He struggled. And so the judge finally put in a qualified receiver and people who could operate it. So, it was closed the biggest part of 2015. Does anybody remember that?
No, remember, that's two years ago, though.
Right, okay.
You're saying now that you're...
Right, so it was closed and then there was some issues with the troubled ownership in November, December, and January. They put in a receiver in March. He, he was there 30 days and then they put Kevin Singer and our group in, who knows how to do this. So, it's been operating at full capacity since, since we went in, in March of 2016.
And the question was to restate your sales.
The sales were 20,000 to 25,000 when we took over and we will do 145,000 to 150,000 this month. We do, I looked, we did 2,000 patients in May with 200 new patients in May. And it's gone up in June because of all the seasonal influx and the new people come up, coming up from the valley. And, and I don't think it's dark at 8:00 up here, I'm not sure. I'm not here that often, but, but that's our goal too, is I don't want the employees there in the dark. I don't want them closing up in the dark, that type of thing. So, for us, it made sense to be able to stay up until 8:00 in the summertime when people are out and about and enjoying the, the season up here.
The reason for my question was, it seems to me that we're trying to amend something that, it's illustrated through your testimony here, that by running the business efficiently, you could probably get around needing these amendments.
It's up, it's for the patients, it's so they don't have to sit in the waiting room and so there aren't 15 people outdoors, you know, outside when we open up in the morning. It's, from, from, from my perspective, it's not about increasing the revenues. I think we're, we've increased the revenues, we can pay the bills, we're participating in the community in, in a few nice ways. And so for us, it's servicing the patients.
Thank you.
Councilmember also.
Thank you. I'm gonna piggyback up our vice mayor, but, you know, I understand it's for your patients and everything else, but when you can do 120% to 130% in 15 months by just having somebody run it without any changes and people are buying the marijuana, doing everything it's supposed to do and still making money on it. It's, I'm having a hard time to go with, why, why do we need to change when everything, your feeling thing? You know, doctor's office likes to see a lot of patients in there, they're getting money. Same things here, you're already getting the money, you're getting the patients there, people know where you're at and you're making 120-plus percent profit on it.
We're not making 120%.
Not profit, but from where it was the first time in Mar, okay, in, in 15 months. And without any changes that you're asking us to do and you're still doing great. So, I, I have a hard time, I have to agree with, I have a hard time trying to change something to, that, that we, that we already okayed and, and it was justified for us in here with, with the guy or lady or I don't know who it was, to sit up and talk to us and to read to these conditions. And, and you're still doing great. So it's hard for me to change the conditions when that's kinda stuff is going great, so.
I think on the hours, you answered your own question when you said you want extended hours, but you're already not opening at 9:00, you're opening at 10:00. And you wanna go later into the evening. And, and you've chose not to open earlier, the hours we've given you. So, you know, you might wanna try, you know, opening at 9:00, closing at 6:00, as we've stipulated, you know, in, in the stipulation here. And I really think, you know, the six days a week are fine. Most people who, who are on prescription, they're buying a 30-month supply or however long they are. I don't know what your prescriptions are for, 30 months, 60 months, 60 days, 90 days, I don't know. You know, and, you know, most of us get our prescriptions and we get them on regular hours during the time anything else is open, Monday through Friday or something even, or they come in the mail because we're able to get them, you know, and we bind there. So I think if they know these are, are the hours of operation and it's six days a week, it's pretty, pretty accessible to still be able to purchase, you know, what's needed there. I think we're making a concession here of your paraphernalia that will boost sales, boosts, that will help your patients be able to get what they need readily right there and be able to have that. Your hours of operation, you haven't maxed those yet. And I think your signage, I think we'll hold to our signage because it's not hurting your business and there's people that know where it's at. You're, you've stated that they already know that you have a very high quality, a very, you know, well-sought-after dispensary. And so, you know, for those people who choose to go there and find that that's an incorrect place, it ain't different than, as Mr. Cedarblade stated, you know, sometimes that's just good for business too, that they, they can turn around and say, oh, by the way, this place is down the street or something too.
I have one more quick question from Morgan. So, back to the condition number two. So, this could change whenever they get done finding out, whenever the judge decides whatever their problems are. So this condition two could come back to us anyway, correct? If they change ownership, we could be redoing this anyway?
Sure, I mean, if there, if there's a sale of the business, I think right now, she'd have to explain, but I think it's the partners that are probably in conflict with each other over...
But who, whose name, so there's only one name on the condition or is it the partners, both names on the condition?
No, the, the, the name of the business is the Green Hills Patient Center, Inc.
But there's gotta be an owner, correct?
Well, there's, yeah, there's, it's a corporation, so there's shareholders and there's people that own it. How that shakes out in court, I don't know. They may keep the same name and it just, you know, maybe one buys the other out or whatever, that's, you know, that's...
Right, so licenses can't, cannot be sold in Arizona. They're not, it's for nonprofit. And so what happens is the board seats transfer. So there technically isn't a sale because they're not saleable in the state of Arizona.
Can you share with us how much money went to the schools from the sale of cannabis last year that was supposed to go to the school for, for, you know, if it's non-profitable, some of the profits are supposed to be dispersed down to who? Who's getting some of the profits?
I have no idea because we have not been informed by anybody of any kind of distribution into the community. I can tell you that in Payson it was different, but I don't know what it is here. And through all of the court documents and everything we've been given to operate with, we've never been, we've never been presented with anything.
Yeah, that'd be a good part of the law to know, if, as citizens, we passed this and there was supposed to be some benefits to the schools or to public education or something. It'd be good to know how much of those funds have actually gone back from the sale in Arizona to those schools.
I can tell you that in Payson, it was the agreement between the town and the ownership. And so, and I met with the town attorney there and, you know, we made some payments monthly to the town. But I've never been, I've never known that to have agreement, do you have an agreement here?
We just have our sales taxes paid, but, but I thought the whole passage of the law of having it, like in Colorado, there was so much that's supposed to go to schools and education, was that not part of Arizona?
I think that's what they were proposing, Mayor, but I don't think that ever got passed. Justin can talk to that. I think a portion of it through the state taxes is supposed to go to certain locations and that's probably on that DHS website, but maybe Justin knows a little bit more.
I think to clarify that, on our, on our most recent state ballot, there was a proposition to allow for recreation, recreational marijuana use. And I believe there was a tie-in with sales tax collection that a certain percentage would go to schools and, and other similar type facilities.
That's my mistake, I'm getting the medical and the recreation crossed up there.
That did not pass the voters this time around, so.
Thank you for clarifying that for me, appreciate it.
I'll make a motion if, if...
Well, I wanna ask Pam, can you live with these conditions? If we were to allow item four, your reasonable, I mean, your, your paraphernalia that we have and kept the hours as such and the signage as such, can you live with that?
Yeah, we can live with that.
Thank you.
Of course we can. And I just wanna say thank you. I, I don't know if you appreciate how important this facility is for some members of the community. Again, thank you very much for your consideration. You have a wonderful group of patients here, I love to come to Sholo. You have good residents that, that visit the dispensary. So, thanks for, thanks for your help and your consideration.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Kelly.
Justin was asking to be recognized.
Hey, sorry, Justin.
I just had a clarification, not knowing what the motion's going to be. There was some question about putting a sign on the door that would, you know, state cannabis dispensary, that sort of thing. From a code standpoint, if a sign is not visible from the adjacent property, we really don't consider it to be a sign. And so, as part of the motion, staff would request a clarification. Would the sign on the door still be permitted? Or, the only sign would be the sign that you see on the overhead with Green Hills Patient Center?
Well, I, just real quick, I personally wanna leave it the way it is except for let him sell paraphernalia. So however you wanna verbiage that in a motion is how I wanna, I don't wanna allow any of the other conditions that are being submitted here, except for the sale of the paraphernalia. Everything else I wanna keep the same the way we, we voted on in 2013, so.
Okay, so from, from staff's perspective, our understanding would then be that there would be no sign on the door. It would be just as currently constituted on the property.
But, but looking at the building, now I got concerned about the light that's over there, is that allowed? That little cross, is the, what is the cross? What is that?
Appreciate you asking that question. So, the picture that you see here in front of you is not a current picture. It's fairly dated. There was some communication that was brought forward this evening about management changing with the new manager that came into place. We did notify them that, hey, these are the conditions of approval, which kinda prompted where we are tonight. We also indicated that that green cross in the window, which is kinda the universal symbol of the medical marijuana industry, that that constituted the sign. It has since been removed. So, if you took a current picture today, you would not see that in the window. Mayor?
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, now for clarification. We're talking about a sign on the door, but in your definition of Sholo code, a description of the business on the door is not a sign. Am I right?
Generally, under code, if you can't read it from the right-of-way or from the adjacent property, we don't consider it a sign. In this case, because the condition and the stipulations that were made were that the only words would be Green Hills Patient Center. From a staff's perspective, if we're going to allow a sign on the door that states medical cannabis or whatever on there, we would like to see that clarified as part of this process so that we know it's either A or it's B and we don't have to worry about anything.
And I agree with that. Ambiguity is the worst thing we can be dealing with here. And there's a part of me that says, let's save the embarrassment on some people's part by going in there not knowing what it is, just let it be right on the door. If by our own code, that's not a sign. I mean, let's not get into splitting hairs. You know, let's just help people know that they're there when they're there, if that's what they want and that they can avoid opening the door and going in if it would be an embarrassment to them.
Pam, do you have, if you could come back with another question? Thank you. Do you have any, anything on your door now? Do you have like hours of operation or anything on your, on your door front?
Oh, we have a little sign that says the ATM is not working, I noticed.
Do we have any other signs, please?
No.
I don't think so. The sign is important, I mean, it's, I'm in the retail business and other businesses, signs are important and I think you guys know that.
They definitely are. I mean, I'm gonna say, I don't have a problem with your hours of operation that was stated here, you know, open 8:00 to 6:00. I don't have a problem if you have prescription, you know, use only or prescription card holders only, you know, something like that, that you can identify your business a little bit with. But I don't wanna neon blinking, you know, anything there big and I think we've held that. But there are some things, as Councilmember Kelly said, if I walked up there as a business and I went in and I walked out and six people saw me, they'd say, you know, Mayor Seymour's got his card now, you know, and, and that's some to what could be an embarrassment for some people that know me on a different avenue. But at the same time, I know that as a city, but there may be somebody, and I think they'd have to be real naive to, to be able to, you know, go in there and out and say they didn't know what it was, you know, to a point. But I don't wanna just delay, limit this anymore, so I'll let you guys make your...
Would it be like... I'm trying to make a motion. Would it be like, like a no soliciting sign, something like that, small on your door?
Well, just your hours of operation that you have, like any other business has.
If you limit the size, you know, you don't wanna sign the whole size of the door that you can see from the street. So you need to limit the size too.
But, but I think we're all, all against the use of marijuana or cannabis or anything like that on that. But it could, you know, identify yourself a little bit more with the script, prescription card holders.
But if we make the motion the way it states in here as deny it except for condition four, then that doesn't worry, we don't care about the sign, correct? Then the sign won't matter because we stick to the conditions that we already approved in 2013. So, that's what I'm trying to get at. I think we're, if we stick to what we approved in 2013, except for men and let them sell the paraphernalia, then we don't, the, the sign issue doesn't come into play, correct? That was sort of a question.
My, my understanding and the reason for the request of clarification is if you only amend condition 15 to allow for the sale of paraphernalia and do not amend the sign condition to allow for a sign on the door or some other type sign to go along with it, then they would not be able to put any additional type signage on the building, on the door, anything along those lines. In, in my opinion, the condition about the signage was a very strict condition. The only thing that was allowed, as stipulated by the representative at the time, was Green Hills Patient Center.
So, are you saying that in the motion, we sit there and tell them what they could put on their door? Is that what you're trying to say? Sorta?
I'm, I'm just asking if they would be allowed to place a sign on the door and if it would be able to... it would be able to read, you know, something besides.
Well, that's what I mean. We're going to tell them what they're going to put on their door. That doesn't make sense to me. I'm sorry. But it seems like to me, you said that if you couldn't read it from the road, then you can put anything you want on the door. But under this condition, if we left it the way it is, they could put anything on the door?
Again, going back to the history and the stipulations that were made, the stipulation was that the only signage that would be placed on the building would be Green Hills Patient Center. And from a staff's perspective, that means even something on the door. Even though if I open a business and I'm selling hamburgers, I can put something on the door that says I sell hamburgers. And so if, in order to expand, I guess that, that understanding or that interpretation, what staff is requesting is if we're going to allow a sign on the door, amend the condition to say, allow a sign on the door, you know, with the wording medical cannabis dispensary.
That's what I mean.
Or authorized recommendation holders only or something along those lines.
So before that happened, that, so, okay, I'm, because I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a motion to put what they want to put on the door. So if they want to put something on the door, I can put that they have to go to the city hall first, go to you before they put anything on the door. Does that make more sense than, I mean, to me, they, it should be approved somewhere, what they're putting on the door. I mean, if they would have put hours of operation, I think it's kind of dumb that they're going to call you and say, hey, you know, but as far as the medical part of it, I think it should be approved from staff. Is that the direction would make more sense or?
Right now, the only wording that is allowed is Green Hills Patient Center.
Okay.
So if they came to me and said, we want to put a sign on the door today, under the condition as it's currently written, I would say it can only say Green Hills Patient Center on it.
Okay.
And the concern being, does that protect the person who's just walking in thinking they're getting their back adjusted?
And I agree with that. I'm just trying to figure the verbiage more than anything.
Couldn't the verbiage, Pam, would you have a problem with you designing your door front verbiage and bringing it back to council for approval?
Um, no.
You said you like coming up here. Now you're just debating on whether you want to keep that or not.
I mean, I'm saying, I'm saying we're going to allow you to put.
Better than 119 degrees.
I think you've heard what we're going to allow. We're going to allow you to put your hours because these people are waiting there at 10, nine o'clock and know you don't open till 10. That would be nice if that was on the door, okay? And so your store hours would be great.
Right.
And then we're not going to allow, you know what, we're not going to allow cannabis, marijuana, anything like that, okay? But if you want to identify yourself, your business, that you are a prescription card holder or something like that, then we will look at that and see if we can accept that.
Can that be something that we could do on a consent calendar so we don't have to have this?
Yes, it could.
Okay. That makes sense then.
It'd be brought before council.
So she really wouldn't have to come up here. That's what I'm saying.
So even in small print, I, I would not be allowed to put cannabis patients only?
Nope.
Okay, so I'd have to come up with?
Prescription card holders only.
Got it.
And, and, yeah, okay. I'm going to try to.
You're talking about the door.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm going to make this motion. I'm, can I make a motion?
Can you?
Well, I'd love to. I don't know. I probably lost. First, I, I don't, so I'm going to move, I move to deny the amendments conditional use permit 602-04-156 submitted by Green Hill Patient Center, Inc., but allow the, geez, was it condition?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Or, you know, fifteen.
I don't want to go back and look at.
Yeah, fifteen.
But allow condition 15 on the sale of paraphernalia, if that makes sense. And, and I don't think, before I get a second, can, I don't think I have to say that.
But.
Should I state that?
You can deny it because we have so many conditions that we have to approve.
Deny the, why deny the whole condition?
Can I try modifying that?
He denied the whole application.
That's why I asked earlier, if, if those conditions were put separately, it would have made more sense. So deny the whole thing. Start over. So I just wasted five minutes of my life right there. Fifteen.
Councilmember Kelly?
Great.
Let's see, we have, we have a motion. Is there a second? Dies for lack of a second, Councilmember.
Let me, let me give it a try. I move to approve amendments to conditional use permit 602-04-156 submitted by Green Hills Patient Center, excluding condition four as reasonable approved by the city signage, excluding condition five, hours of operation shall be limited to seven days a week, et cetera, and including condition 15, the permit is for the sale of medical marijuana and related paraphernalia only onsite cultivation is prohibited.
Mine sounded better.
Don't you still have to add 16 and 17 back?
Those go away anyway, right?
No.
Well, no, that, so item six.
But if you eliminate condition number four, would be eliminated that altogether though?
Okay, and including the same hours as presently stated in our conditional use permit.
Sure. So 16 is the six days a week from nine to six. Number five, it was to change it to seven days a week with the extended hours in the summer. So if you're not going with number five, you would keep number 16.
Okay.
My second.
My, my question, my question I have on here though, this is, but you're eliminating condition number four. Condition number four was the previous condition about the signage. They're wanting to amend condition number four. So if we eliminate condition number four, now there's no signage condition on them. So we can't just eliminate it flat out. We have to keep it, but we have to deny their amendment to section four.
Right. Condition four would remain unchanged from what was previously approved.
Yeah, but we can't just eliminate it out of the.
That is correct.
Condition five would be deleted in its entirety.
Ow.
Because we have two kind of conflicting conditions.
Mine made more sense. I'm sorry, we'd have been done because if we denied the whole thing, we'd start over.
I was right there with you, Junior.
Yeah. What's up with mine was so much easier. We'd have been on our road to the next one by now.
And then number 17 should also be deleted because it is included with number 11. It's a redundant condition.
Right.
I'm not asking for a second yet, so I'll say that motion dies for lack of a.
Basically, what we're doing is approving the paraphernalia.
I said that already.
I know.
Twenty minutes ago.
You did good.
No, you said eliminate the entire agreement with the exception of.
Except for, why can't you do that?
Because you eliminated the entire agreement.
You have to keep it, keep it intact.
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I move to approve the amendments to the conditional use permit 602-04-156 submitted by Green Hills Patient Center, not making any changes to condition number four or number five, and only changing condition number 15 as stated that the permit of the sale of medical marijuana related paraphernalia only onsite cultivation is prohibited, eliminating item number 17, and allowing the applicant to bring back signage change for their door only to council for approval. The motion is there second, second by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Does that cover it? Does that cover? You have any questions or?
I do have a question. So Mayor, on, on condition number five, that's one of the things we're trying to eliminate. There was some confusion. So that one says seven days a week, nine to six.
We left number five as, as it was. We did not change the original condition.
That's number 16.
Well, but 16 is the one that actually they've been, they've been following because it's six days a week from nine to six. So if you look at number five, it says seven days a week, nine to six.
Okay.
And they're actually following in their number 16, which is six days a week.
Why don't you guys write it up this way?
Well, that's what the council did at the last meeting, so.
Then I'll amend my motion if you'll amend your second to eliminate item number five altogether and keep item number 16?
Yes, correct.
Okay, will you make, accept that second? Thank you. That's crystal clear.
Yeah, for some reason, I feel like.
Pam, are you clear?
I think, I think I'm clear.
One person in this whole building. Great.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass? Six to zero. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing regarding the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018 and proposed secondary property tax levy of resolution R 2017-20, adopting for the final budget of fiscal year ending June 30th. Mr. Triget Johnson.
I know Justin. The other Justin stole the show tonight. I'll put everybody to sleep. So before we enter into our public hearing, Mayor, I'd like to go through a few slides just highlighting some of the budget items that we've discussed over the past six months, starting back in January. Basically, what we have is an abbreviated presentation that was what you saw a couple of weeks ago at the tentative budget. So we didn't make any changes. So I'll just state that upfront. So we're here tonight for the final budget adoption with the final budget expenditure limitation of $48,524,686. And the last step in our process will be on July 18th to adopt our secondary tax rate. This is a refresh on the council goals and priorities, how we build and maintain our budget. This slide is a history of our adopted budget versus what we've actually spent over the last several years with the estimates in 17 at 30, 39.4 million. We expect that will probably drop a little bit more just because of project carryovers. And then you see our fiscal year 2018 budget number there. This is a breakdown of the sources of funds. As we put together our budget, shows where our revenues come from, mostly through operating revenues and beginning fund balance. This is a breakdown of the operating revenues and how that, how we attain the 30 million in operating revenue. You can see most of that's through local state shared tax revenues and then utility fees and charges for services. This is how we expend the funds across all funds. Capital operations take up most of it and then personnel is at 31%. This is a breakdown of our personnel by service area. And this is a breakdown of our capital. It's important that we use our, our tax dollars wisely and we try to expend on capital and, and not as much on personnel. So we're building projects and, and making improvements in the city. And you can see we have a lot of money allocated for streets this year for projects and wastewater and water. And then we've left the council contingency at 250,000. This chart gives you a breakdown of the expenditures by service area. And then this just explains what we'd already talked about, our public hearing tonight, which we'll go into next, and then our secondary property tax levy for the Streetlight Improvement District on July 18th. That's what I have for the final budget.
Any questions? Comments?
Good job.
Okay, I'll open this up for a public hearing regarding the final budget. Any citizens wishing to speak on our budget may do so at this time. Seeing nobody moved, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council to approve our budget with the exception, the approval of the secondary tax levy will be considered at the July 18th meeting. On there. Vice Mayor?
I move to adopt resolution number 2017-20, adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2018 in the amount of $48,524,686.
I have a motion seconded by Councilmember Alsop. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that passed? Six to zero. This time we need to leave. We will recess into a special meeting of the Sholo Bluff Community Facilities District Board to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a similar format here. We need to review a quick presentation, then we'll have a public.
Just a minute.
Yes.
Let me make sure she's ready, then we got to go through this process here a little bit. Yeah, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Sholo Community Facilities District to order by roll call. See that all board members are present with the exception of Board Member Kokavas, who's been excused. We have, tonight, our first item is Public Hearing Resolution R 2017-02, adopting the final budget and setting the tax levy for fiscal year June 30th. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a brief presentation before the public hearing. As stated, this is our final budget for fiscal year 2018 and the dollar amount is 280,300. This is a brief overview of the Community Facilities District in Sholo Bluff. Was formed in 2005. It's a separate unit of government from the city and the debt issued must be covered by the districts. And the assessed values of the properties are used to determine those amounts. The benefit of the debt must be for the district. And a total of $2.9 million was issued in multiple years and is due to pay off in 2032. This is a history of our assessed valuations. And there was a decline leading up until fiscal year 2017, this current year that we're in, where we've seen a, a change where we actually had an increase. So we're hopeful that that trend will continue. And there has been some activity as far as, as building permits being pulled for the bluffs. And we've also had some inquiries from realtors and, and developers asking about payoffs for assessments and looking at some activity in that area. So there are two separate funds. There's a special assessment and then there's the general obligation bonds. Assessment bond was taken out in 2007 for $2 million with an annual debt service of $153,900. The developer owns approximately 56% of those and we do have a reserve of 215,000. For the revenues, on the assessment billings, we have June assessments for principal and interest and in December it's interest only. The billing total is 135,985. For the general obligation side, we have the tax rate of $3.55 per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. And we will note that the assessments will not cover the debt service and the developer has agreed to cover the difference there. So there's no obligation to the city to pay the shortfall between the assessments and the debt service. Revenues in the general obligation, we have a significant beginning balance there and property taxes, $47,000 per year. And then the breakdown of the 355, $3.25 of the 355 goes towards the debt service and 30 cents goes to operations. And the total amount we need to adopt tonight is 280,300.
Thank you. Look for a motion. Councilmember Alsop?
I move to adopt resolution, a resolution number R 2017-2.
All right. I need to open this up for public hearing first, sorry. This time I need to open this for public hearing. See, nobody moved forward for public hearing. I'll close public hearing and bring it back to Board Member for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution number R twenty seventeen dash two, adopting the final budget in amount of two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred dollars, and setting a tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen at three dollars and fifty-five cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
I have a motion, is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass? Six to zero. Next item is consideration of the minutes of Sholo Bluff Community Facilities District of the board meeting June sixth, two thousand seventeen.
I'm moved.
I have a motion, we have a second, seconded by Councilmember Alsop. All those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass? Six to zero. Seeing no other business of the Community Facilities District, I'll adjourn the meeting. You ready? Yeah, this time, we'll re, uh, come back out of recess into our open meeting here, the Sholo City Council. Next item we have is summary of current events. I'd like the council members for summary of current events. Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing, I'd like to let everybody know that this is, coming up June thirtieth, is the twelfth annual Deuces Wild Rodeo. It starts at seven P M. The kids, prices for the kids are five dollars, adults are ten, families twenty-five dollars, and it's at the arena, Village Arena, it's just at four fifty-five South White Mountain Road. That's just past Denny's, and before you get to the hospital, on the left-hand side of the road, if you're coming from Sholo to Pine Top. So I'll put that on your calendar, and hopefully everybody have a great time with that. Second thing is, uh, Sholo Main Street, the, the Farmer's Market Art Walk is doing great. This is the eighth season of that. Uh, there are sixty-nine vendors, thirteen available spaces left, so there's ninety-nine really spots you can do, and eighty-five percent of it's already sold. So if you haven't been there on a Saturday so far since Memorial Weekend, look them up, and there's all kinds of good food and good stuff to buy and purchase there, and just to have a great time. So enjoy your time with, in the city of Sholo on, on Saturdays. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other current events, council members? Just, it's our last meeting before Fourth of July. We just encourage everybody to be part of our Fourth of July celebration, and we hope everything's going great, as well as your patience as we're starting our slurry seal. And we hope to be able to have some news, that we'll have an open house shortly on our public safety building here. We'll finalize that tomorrow. Just be aware that we're in stage one fire restrictions. That is not the worst situation. That's the beginning of our fire restrictions. It goes stage two, three, four. So right now, we're at stage one, as of last Friday. So just be aware of what that includes in, and be careful around fires. Thank you. This time, I'll turn the time to Mr. Bounor, City Attorney, for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It would be the longest report of the year when Ed's gone. I'll try to keep it quick. There's still tickets available at City Hall for this Saturday's concert by country western singer Billy Dean. It's in the Sholo School District Auditorium. Tickets are fifteen dollars each, and also are sold at the door. Showtime is seven thirty, but the doors opening at seven. You can call five three two, forty-one forty, for more information. City staff is also helping hatch Toyota with its annual fishing derby this Saturday at Fools Hollow Lake. Registration begins at six A M., and the fishing competition is free for kids ages eight to thirteen, and it starts at eleven. Now, the mayor mentioned the slurry sealing that's going on. We ask for your patience as we go through that process. If you need more information, there is a project schedule on the city's website, and we're hoping everything is completed the next week. There is also the first phase of the Waterline Project along the Deuce of Clubs, which will be done this week. The second phase won't start until after the Fourth of July. As you know, we also have the widening project on U S sixty. Working hours are Monday through Thursday from seven to five. It's narrowed from one lane from six A M. to four thirty P M. Drivers should expect delays of up to thirty minutes. There's also information available on the city's website for that project. Applications are available for the Free Citizens Academy to learn about law enforcement, and are due by next Friday, June thirtieth. Classes will be held in the new public safety building on the Deuce of Clubs every Wednesday from six to ten P M., beginning July fifth. You can visit the city's website for the application and more detailed information. Finally, as Mayor noted, we're preparing for our Fourth of July's activity. It starts this, or not, I'm sorry, not this Friday. It starts June thirtieth. It kicks off with two events. One is the Deuces Wild Rodeo, mentioned by Councilman Alsop. And if you need more information on that, you can go to deuceswildrodeo.us for more information. The other event we have is a red, white, blue-out, or aquatic sender, from seven to nine P M. on June thirtieth. There'll be swimming, snacks, and carnival games. You can call five three two, forty-one thirty, for more information. As of today, there's twenty-eight entrants that are registered for the annual parade. On Tuesday, July fourth, it starts at nine A M. along the Deuce of Clubs. They will accept parade registrations until Monday, June twenty-sixth. Immediately after the parade, they'll have the free wet zone at the Frontier Fields. And at three P M., the gates open at the Sholo Football Stadium Complex for the day-long Freedom Fest, with music, food vendors, kids' activities, and the fireworks show starting roughly at nine P M., depending on weather. And then information about traffic detours and list events is also on the website. And since this is the last council meeting of the current fiscal year, we wish everyone a happy, safe Fourth of July. Our next council meeting is on Tuesday, July eighteenth, at seven P M.
Thank you. Any schedule of meetings? And if there, seeing no other business, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.